Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Gisoni Board of Adjustment meeting of July 23rd, 2025. Will everyone please stand for salute to the flag?
I.
My name is.
To the flag in the United States of America. Particularly how rich and generous. When he. I'm going to draw it in his face. Everybody here, you can just record that.
Notice of the meeting has been satisfied in accordance with Chapter 231 PL 1975 by advertising in the Home News Tribune, notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, and also posting on the bulletin board and filing with the Borough Clerk. Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Anna.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
Mr. Castle.
Here.
Mr. Tommy.
In regards to all business and continuing carrying over applications, we have none. So we're going to hear our first case is 2513 28 Idrawell Avenue. Please come forward.
Hi.
Yes.
Would you tell the board exactly what you want to do on your property at 28 Idrawell Avenue?
You want to install an in-ground pool? And because you don't have enough space, the setbacks 10 feet from the property line. And you're going to do a little bit closer. If I'm not mistaken, it's eight from the neighbor and far from my garage.
So what you want to do is where there's a 10-foot minimum, you're proposing eight foot, is that correct?
Yes.
And the other one where the garage is, it's a 10-foot minimum, and you're proposing four?
Yes.
Okay. That's the only stipulation that you have for the pool, correct?
Yes.
Board have any questions?
Uh, so we need to install the fence, but it's going to be, uh, the.
The vinyl.
The vinyl. Oh, no, around the property.
The property. It's going to be a gate. It's going to be a gate in the driveway. As right now, we don't have it, but we know we're going to need as when we have the pool. We're going to put a gate in the driveway, and on the other side of the house is like a little walk away. So we're going to close that too, so no one can walk on our backyard.
They don't need anything or anything except.
No. You're going to, you're going to speak with the zoning officer in reference that fence, correct?
Yes. They're going to get permits for everything.
Okay. Do you, do you have anybody who's putting the pool up for you?
We're going to put a pool. We own a.
We own a pool business, so we're going to do it. Like the company is going to do it.
You, you are the owners of A and F Pool?
Yes.
Okay, and you're going to put the pool up yourself?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, what are the variances required?
Um, I have a question on variances also, but they need to be 10 feet from the side property line, 10 feet even accessories. So they're only eight feet from the side property line, four feet from the garage. So they would need that big. Well, this is one. Rear yard, looking at the garage, uh, it's scaling about 6.5 feet. So are. See the same thing. So you would need to be 10 feet from the rear also, because they're about seven. So we need a variance in the rear yard stuff like also.
Okay, and that's not included in there?
Just that side yard, I think, they're not paid. So you just recommend there, like your asking for, it's asking for a variance in the rear yard, where those are approximately seven feet is being provided and 10 feet required.
Okay.
So, um.
Unless you planned on having 10.
If we can have seven.
If we can have seven, if you.
Can you wait right now or you need to apply for another variance?
Did you want the pool to line up with the back of your garage? Was that the intention?
Yes.
Kinda, yeah.
There would be an additional variance. It's supposed to be 10, and they have approximately seven.
And I just promise, this is not anything to the zoning, but from the new guy that saw pools, but if you made a pool from maybe like three or four feet, you got to put in the pool collar, and your, your line is four feet away. I think that doesn't have too much of a, uh, foundation for the garage, but you're not going to have to line your garage if you think. Cool, right?
Yeah, nice. It will be like a little bit of space on the garage. That's why we're putting four feet, because that will be enough for the extraction.
Think about three feet from the pool in, correct?
Yeah.
Collar?
Mm-hmm.
This was again, what you said you were.
Yeah.
Four people.
Yeah, because I want, we, we did it that way because we want to leave a little bit more space for the neighbor. So you'd not interfere with the neighbor, so that's why we put it closer to the garage.
You're working for it, you're allowed to say it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, what's the width of your property?
I don't know.
Forty feet, okay, so it's a very narrow property. I'm just looking for a reason to grant the variance.
Yeah, then you have a garage.
Very narrow property.
Yes.
We didn't want the garage, but when we bought the house, it came with the garage, so.
Anyone else have any questions? Want to open this to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak in reference this application? What, please?
Hello, Edward Strawski. I live on 30 Idrawell Avenue. I'm your next-door neighbor. The property is small. They want to put in a 10-by-25-foot pool in their yard. You got a garage, knock down the garage. I want it 10 feet away from my property. That's the variance, right? 10 feet away. And then they have a garage. They want to put four feet? Come on. Ostrawski, O-S-T-R-O-W-S-K-I, Edward. 30 Idrawell Avenue. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public which to speak in reference this application? Hearing no one from the public, I close the public portion. What is the board want to do with this application?
I don't think there's enough of a setback from the garage.
What else do we? Think there's something else. Mr. Chairman, if you want to increase the setback from the garage, it means you're going to decrease the setback from the other side property line, which the neighbor was concerned with. The width of the pool is, it's 10 feet, so it's not an extremely wide pool.
Chairman, if you just like pull forward to 3 feet and eliminate the rear yard barriers, that's something for the board.
Seeing that you're in the pool business, can you modify the dimensions of this pool?
Yeah, we can.
You can always modify, yes. It's going to be a custom pool. It's going to be a vinyl liner pool, so you can do the size that you want.
I'm just going to ask this question for the record. Are you using your garage for anything?
No.
So you're not using the garage for cars?
No, just storage stuff. No, no cars, no garage, nothing. Just kids' toys, just.
When, when you bought the property, was that garage there?
Yes.
It was?
It was there.
Garage looks very old. And it's wooden, right?
No, it's concrete.
It's concrete.
It's like cement blocks. And has no cracks at all in the garage. It's completely solid.
Mr. Chairman, I, my question is if Andy's going to be looking at the fence, right, is, are we putting the car before the horse? What, what if he knocks it down and, and they can't get together on the fence and?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Mr. Mishansky regarding the fence. He indicated that there wouldn't be any variances for the fence.
Wouldn't be, okay.
That's why it wouldn't be part of this application. They can install a fence without the need for variances.
Thanks, Jim.
That, that's exactly what he said to me too, that he was going to take care of the fence.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for the app. If, if you're not using your garage, could you turn your pool 90 degrees and put it between the patio and the garage?
So.
In front of the garage, you mean?
You've got, I guess you've got your house and you've got a paver patio. If you turn the pool and have it coming off that patio.
So that was the suggestion that I got not to go through a variance, but this way the pool would be in front of my house. And to go to the backyard, we have to go around the pool. And you'll be like.
If we want in the future, we're going to park, and if hard in the garage, we'll not be able to.
Yeah.
Understood.
Because the pool is going to cover the entrance of the garage. So that's why we didn't want to do like that.
That's an option, so you're explaining why it doesn't work for you. Okay, thank you. What kind of fence are you planning to install?
The white vinyl fence.
How long?
Six foot?
What about the suggestion that you modify this, this, this pool and come back to us with it?
Like what, what do you want to need to modify exactly, so we can work on it?
You're proposing 10 feet. What's the narrowest pool that you build?
It's just, we can do it smaller, but it's.
It's going to be like a lap pool if we go to a small.
I understand. Just want to find out. Because the way that you increased the side yard setback and the garage setback is make the pool narrower. You're proposing 10, which is fairly, fairly narrow pool.
Yeah, usually the small size of the pool, like.
It's 12 by 34. And they already made it smaller.
Mr. Ostrawski on the side of the rear.
I believe he's on the, he's on the left side facing the house. He's on the left side.
Yeah.
That's the side with the eight-foot setback.
Can we get that modified to go to 10 feet?
Well, he's in the business, can't he do whatever?
I think, Mr. Chairman, if you want to have 10 feet on the side adjacent to number 30, you need to slide it and have a two-foot setback from the garage, or you need to make the pool narrower.
Can you build it with a two-foot setback from the garage?
No. It's too close to the garage too far. It has to be at least three feet from the garage. Three would be like against, like the structure of the pool would be against the structure of the garage. So that's why we put a four, so we have a foot to work on it.
Does it have to be an in-ground pool?
You want an in-ground pool? It's, we, we think like for the kids, it's going to be better because I don't feel like, I know above-ground pools has the letters and everything, but I can't really see the kids if I'm not inside the pool. Unless I build a deck.
Since you're in the pool business, and I'm just talking out loud here, is there an above-ground pool that would, that you could put in, so you'd be in compliance?
Yes, there's like a lot of.
So the one, it does exist, okay.
I mean, it should be less than 10 feet, so I, I don't really think they smaller, they had like 15 rounds.
Yeah, we got to check on it, because we don't do above-ground. We're doing grounds. So we have to look at it, because we're not, I'm not sure.
And same thing would be like a bit front of the house, because.
And if we do above the ground, there's no variance? You can put anywhere in the backyard?
No, there's still the variance, right?
The other variance on above the grounds?
You have to be in compliance.
The same in 10-foot.
So yeah, there is not a above-ground pool that's less than 10.
If, if you slid the pool one feet to the right, make it three feet from the garage and provide a nine-foot setback from the adjacent property that the neighbor's concerned with, and a 10-foot from the rear property. That way you need only two variances. Does that allow you to build a pool?
We can, we can do that.
Yeah, we can.
I, I know that you were concerned with the proximity to the garage.
Yeah.
It's going to be close, but it's buildable. We can build it.
It's, it's. I agree, it's better to have the four, just from a construction standpoint.
What will the new, the new, uh, pool be?
I don't know that it was decided, Mr. Chairman. I think that your, your board member has a concern with the four feet. She feels it should be more than four. So if you make that five, then that means it's only going to be seven on the side that the neighbor's concerned with. You have a 10-foot pool and 12 feet to work with. You only have 22 feet from the garage to the property line.
Can't you make the pool smaller? I mean, you custom make pools.
As I said, we can make it's a custom pool, but will be a lap pool, too narrow. And also, uh, I didn't understand like, what, what is the concern?
His house is higher than ours. So even if the pool dump water, no water is going to his house.
I understand he doesn't, he wants us to follow the 10 setback, but there is a reason for that.
Because it's like.
It's going to damage his property.
Our street is like going down.
Yeah, so he's higher than us, no water.
So no water from my pool is going to go to his property. If he was on the other side, I see he tend to have some worries for any water who go with gravity to his property, but he's in my higher side. So no water from our pool is going to go to his side.
Mr. Ostrawski, can we talk to you?
What's up?
You have a concern with this pool? What, what is exactly your concern with it?
I have big concerns. I mean, the property is small. It's one car garage. Knock down the garage and put a pool in, that's it. Case closed. You've had, put a kiddie pool in or put, put a hot tub in. I, I mean, a property is, do you have plans for this? Yes. Where are they?
Here. When we like the fence, they control it, but I.
I, I, I asked, I, I asked him to.
I don't want to pay an engineer to design a pool that wasn't approved.
I, I had asked him in a nice way today to stake it out, but he had a job or whatever.
I was leaving to, yesterday you looking over my fence and talking to us about the chickens and everything. Why didn't you ask them yesterday?
Because you were cooking.
Today I was leaving to us, so I can't stop cooking.
All right, let's bring this back.
I can stop you cooking to talking to you.
All, all my thoughts back into. 10 feet away from my property in back, what, from the, the back of your neighbor's fence is, you want to do another eight feet?
If, if they want, I can put tennis on the back, there's no problem. I, I have a lot.
From 30 Idrawell Avenue, they're going to put a two-foot pool in the garage, and then you're going to have a four-foot or a three-foot space in between the pool and the garage? Come on.
I just wanted to get your concern, exactly what you're talking about. Are you also concerned about the water runoff too?
There's no water runoff?
No, I'm asking, is there any wa, wa, water problem there?
No.
Okay.
I mean, yes, it is slow, but I have, um, like, um, flashing. I mean, I mean, they put a pool in, it's going to be more flooding on, on their side. Because you're going to put pavers or you're going to put cinder block, you're going to use cement, whatever you got to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the neighbors.
Okay. This is what our proposal is. We're going to carry this over, and you come back to us on our next meeting with revised plans. Think it over, what you want to do, and bring it back before our board. You know what the issues are. You're in the pool business. You'll be able to figure out a way that will be acceptable to everybody. Your neighbor, us, Borough Serval, and yourself. You won't have to advertise it again. It's a carryover to the next meeting, which is next month.
You can see the main concern is the side yard setback.
So from the neighbor?
From the neighbor.
Yes.
Okay, uh, when I first started this, I was told that he not wanting us to do it, because I knew this was going to happen. So I was like, if that, if he complains about it, uh, that's going to be a no? Or it's a something that we can discuss? And I was told. It's not, it's not a question of he not wanting it. He needs a good reason for not, not wanting it, okay? That was what I was told. So if he doesn't have a good reason, because he doesn't have, he just doesn't want us to have a pool in there, I, I don't understand why we have to make like a smaller pool.
We're going to approve on the applicant that they should be entitled to the variance. It's not on public, so they should not be entitled to the variance. So I would recommend that you figure out a way to somehow comply with the side yard setback, or you can give those sort of compliance, and come back with this voice next year.
See, the ordinance, the borough ordinance in Borough Serval is 10-foot.
Okay.
And what you're asking for us, representing the Borough Serval, to give you a variance and make it eight foot or nine foot. And we're asking you to reconsider the, the, what you, what you're asking for, the 10, the eight, 10-foot going down to eight foot. So reconsider that on a carryover, so you don't have to resubmit anything except to us, and, and come back to us next month and think about it, what you want to do.
Okay.
But the borough ordinance is 10 feet.
10 feet from the neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously, we, the board would be thrilled if you're able to at least some kind of agreement with your neighbor. But, um.
10 foot from him and 10 foot from the neighbor from the back as well, right?
Not just.
Or just from him? Yeah. For the, from, from the back, it can stay with the garage from just 10 foot.
His side.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll come back next month.
Think about it, it's a big decision, but the advantage that you have, you have a, a, a pool company, so you, you'll be able to think it over and, and figure out what you're going to do.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next month, uh, what day, what time? Okay, 27, same time?
Yeah, I'll cover.
Okay.
Well, go to the office there and set it up, but it's the 27th of August.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this application is being carried to the August 27th meeting, no further notice. Uh, if you want to object, you need to be here August 27th, uh, 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It's August 27th, right?
Yes.
August 27th. Will I get another registered mail order?
I'm sorry?
Will I get another registered mail order?
No.
No?
Okay.
No. And the next application is 2509, Five Star Suspension Parts, 306 Journey Mill Road.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Clement, Clement Muller, DA. I'm representing the applicant on this proceeding. Um, and I'll be presenting four witnesses tonight. Representative of the owner, a representative of the applicant, an architect, and an engineer. Uh, with that, I would like to call my first witness, Frank Farrell of Godo Engineering.
Make it work, yes, it does.
It definitely works.
It definitely does.
Uh, you started telling truth, the whole truth, and loving the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, here it goes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Farrell, could you please share with the board your educational licensure credentials?
Absolutely. Uh, I graduated from Rowan University with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in 2009. I was a licensed professional engineer in 2014. My license is active and in good standing. And I'm also a certified municipal engineer. I've appeared, I believe I've appeared before this board and/or the planning board, uh, and numerous other boards throughout the state.
We accept your credentials, proceed.
Um, obviously, you're familiar with the 306 Journey Mill Road site. Could you please give the highlights to the board of the, the minor site plan application that we're seeking pool for and why we're doing it?
Absolutely. I'll try to be brief but thorough, uh, or complete. The property is identified as 306 Journey Mill Road. By the way, the plans that I'm referring to here on the easel are exactly the same plan that was submitted as part of the application. They've not been edited, altered, colorized, doctored, or changed in any way. If you'd like me to mark them as an exhibit anyway, no? Okay.
They're already on the application.
Thank you. The project is located on the westbound, or on the west side of Journey Mill Road when you're traveling northbound between Portentan Avenue and Washington Road. The bulk standards are all compliant with the zone. Um, just to go through them briefly, the minimum tract area is 60,000 square feet, whereas 181,555 square feet exists. And again, these are existing and proposed, and none of these are changing as part of this application. The lot width minimum is 100. The lot is 265 feet in width. The depth requirement is 100, whereas 767 exists today. The minimum front yard setback is 50 feet, whereas 102 feet is between the right-of-way and the existing. It's one-story, but it's fairly tall masonry structure. Referring to sheet two. The one-side setback minimum is 20 feet, whereas 77 is provided. The total setback is 50 feet, whereas 156 feet is provided. The minute, the maximum building coverage is 60%, whereas 3.2% rounded up, uh, is existing and proposed, and the maximum impervious coverage is 85%, whereas 52.9% exists there today. So a more general description of the site, uh, Journey Mill Road varies in width. It's approximately 25 feet wide from the shoulder to shoulder, but more generally, it varies between 30 and 50 feet in paved width. The, it's also a county road. It's known as County Road 675. There is an existing driveway on the site that's not being modified by the applicant. The county is undergoing certain road improvements along Journey Mill Road, but they're not expected to have any significant impact on the property. The county is undergoing certain road improvements along Journey Mill Road, but they're not expected to have any significant impact on the property. The easement that the county took is shown on, it's a temporary construction easement, is shown on the various plans submitted with the application. And the front of the site, which is where. The subject of this application is taking place is mostly a paved parking lot and then. The existing masonry structure. The structure when it was originally built, my understanding is that it was intended as an, uh, an auto service center or a truck service center. It's not that now, and we're here for a change in use from whatever the prior use was. To an auto service center is the most accurate description that would match a provision in the ordinance. That use is not permitted in the SED zone, which is why we're here before you this evening. It's a change in use. All the other bulk requirements are met. Uh, the other variance that we're seeking is a minor variance for parking. The. Existing site has 10 paved, or rather striped, paved parking spaces along Northern Property Line. And as part of this application, we're expanding. The number of spaces that are striped, but we're not increasing the asphalt coverage of the site. Uh, it's all there already. Now I'm looking at sheet A4. So we're increasing the available parking, striped parking on site from 10 to 24. This is based on the. Truck service and maintenance facility and the smaller portion, the front portion of the building is slightly shorter in stature than the rest of the building. Uh, in total, the, the building is about 5,700 square feet. But the back portion is a taller section where they're going to be bringing trucks in and out through an existing garage door. And then the front portion of the building is going to be converted into an office slash small retail area. The parking lot and parking demand associated with those uses is 27 spaces. Uh, and that's a conservative estimate or a conservative calculation based on the ordinance. Uh, and the reason being is there's some, potentially there's some discussion to be had whether this counts as one service bay or six service bays. We're clearly showing six trucks can fit within the building itself, but there's only one door to move them in and out of. Nonetheless, we performed the calculation at, uh, four. I believe it's four per. Four per service bay. Thank you. Yes. So 24 spaces are required pursuant to the. Again, the conservative estimate that we're considering each one of these its own individual bay. Uh, my best approximation as to why that count would be applied to this use would be something more similar to a Pet Boys or Jiffy Lube where you're waiting. Under the customer in front of you to get an oil change, maybe a 20-minute turnaround. That's not this use, as you'll hear from the applicant. This use is a truck, uh, maintenance facility where we're talking about dump trucks that are coming in either under their own power or on a heavy wrecker. They sit inside the garage for a couple of hours while they're being worked on, and then they leave. There's really no significant expectation that there's going to be a lot of passenger vehicle traffic to the site. The retail section in the front is mostly going to be used by those same individuals that are appearing at the site to have their trucks serviced. And as a result, we really don't believe that the, the 27 spaces are required. Nonetheless, we're providing 24, which is still probably more than we're going to need when the site is maxed out. But we believe that it will be satisfied, uh, it'll satisfy the demand for this property and this project and this use in particular. The remainder of the site, which I've not spent a lot of time talking about, but, uh, is, is subject to the application as it's a site plan application before the board. Is an existing lease area. That has a number of prior approvals associated with it. And it's noted in the planners and engineers letters, the board's planners and engineers letters, that that area has. Uh, morphed, shifted or grown somewhat over the years, and it's the intent of the owner to return that area. Back to the original approved lease condition associated with the rear of the site. So. There's an existing gravel area, that area outside of that prior approval. Will be allowed to return to natural conditions or generally will be. Vacated as part of this application. It's going to be returned to that prior approval for these tenant spaces, and that's a leased contractor's yard is the way to think of it. Outdoor storage of, uh, of materials.
Would you please just get back to the board that there is going to be no modification of the building structure at all, other than replacing the signage?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, the building is existing. There is no plan to alter, modify, expand, or another way, change the building. Uh, there is an existing facade sign on the front of the building, which will be replaced with the new tenant's sign, but it's not going to be lit. It's going to be similar in size, area, shape and whatnot as to the sign that's there now. And there is no new freestanding sign or any other signage proposed as part of this application. We also have the required loading zone shown on the side of the building and, uh, small dumpster area. There's a couple of notes. That I'd like to refer to or comments made. And we'll just address those head on. We've submitted the application to the borough's fire official. We've not received comment back yet, but expecting. Uh, if there's any requirements that we add. Fire lane striping or other signage or requirements, we would of course agree to satisfy those. Uh, conditions as, or those comments or requirements. Uh, that may be issued by the fire official. There's a couple other. Whether they be, they're waivers, I believe, uh, that are required, that are, that are requested today. So there's a requirement that Belgium block curbing be provided throughout the parking area. There's no Belgium block curbing there now, and there's really no need to add curbing when the site exists and the parking, the pavement is all there already. Uh, it doesn't really add a lot to the site. And we're requesting that that condition or that requirement be waived. There's also no sidewalk along the frontage. This site is about 1,000 feet north. Of. Starland Ballroom. There's really nothing else around it. There's one contractor's, uh, facility to the north and the, the other neighboring properties are vacant. Sidewalk along the frontage doesn't really seem to be pertinent, uh, or provide a lot of, uh, enhancement along Journey Mill Road itself. Also, the county isn't, to my knowledge, isn't adding sidewalk in that area either, and they're currently working all along the county, uh, their right of way. There's also a requirement that sidewalk be provided within the parking area. Again, parking area exists. We don't feel it necessary to, it doesn't add value, it doesn't increase. Or enhance the project, the property in any way to add sidewalk where there's already asphalt parking area. Uh, we are however adding landscaping and lighting, so there's going to be an enhanced landscape buffer on the property's front edge between Journey Mill Road. And the, the existing asphalt, uh, and that'll assist in screening that parking from view from Journey Mill Road. There is also a waiver requested for the style of striping. We're going to go with the straight. Line striping, whereas I believe hairpin striping is required in accordance with the borough. Uh, design standards. We prefer to stripe it consistent with the existing 10 parking spaces that are there already, rather than have mismatched or remove existing striping. It just seems more, uh, to have more continuity through the site. And I believe. That covers my direct testimony.
Would you like to reserve the questions with all the witnesses until after you've all been done with the testimony, or would you like to ask?
We'll ask as they go along. So anybody have any questions?
Yeah, what's the, um. Use that's not included? That they're applying for?
The use that we're proposing is most accurately described as a truck maintenance facility. I believe that an auto service center is the most similar use defined in the ordinance. But this type of use is fairly unique amongst auto repair. Uh, it is, again, a truck maintenance, think a dump truck or other large vehicle that would be serviced, um, at this facility. It's not, uh, you're not going to drive your car to this site and get an oil change. It's just not that type of use.
It's primarily truck suspension, but like dump trucks, and I'm going to give you the form of testimony today. But it's dump trucks for bobtails, which is the front end of the grid without the trailer. That would come in if they need suspension, springs are down. But that, that's primarily the focus of, of the applicant's business. They have similar operation in Norg, so just service this area much better. It's, it's a business-to-business type of. Uh, operation, and if people, if somebody's got a dump truck that needs springs or suspension. They don't want to drive all over to Norg, have to go to Michael, they'll come in, get it fixed that same day, drive out, you've got to have a job. So it's, it's beneficial.
Why?
You mentioned, you mentioned that there won't be any significant increase in traffic and, and I believe you, based on the business model. However, the retail, I have a question on the retail. What are you going to be selling?
I would, I would rather defer to, to the applicant who's going to be providing testimony shortly.
Whoever can speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
What, what businesses are on the site now? Is it Brookcoat and some kind of company?
I believe the owner can tell you exactly who's there, but again, it's, it's a leased contractor's yard is the best, uh, way to describe it probably, uh, in the rear. And then the existing, uh, structure is, I believe it's currently, you know, unoccupied.
How many lease zones will there be?
There's four on the prior approved plan. Uh, I believe that it's really the area that is. The area of, that is being leased is the biggest question. Um, how much area in total back there is subject to, to being leased and it will be returned to that condition. But again, the, the owner of the property can tell you more about the existing leases.
The, the service, the service that you're going to do, thi- this is going to be done, if they come in like, say, 10 o'clock in the morning, they'll be out that same day.
Yeah, within an hour.
The, the expectation.
It's not going to be where they're going to come in for repair in two or three or four days. It's going to be.
Usually there might be a truck that needs a parking, but as a general proposition, it's same day in, same day out. The driver will either wait there and drive it back out again immediately, or he'll be picked up by an Uber or something like that. And come back to pick up the truck several hours.
Okay.
Are they going to do engines or is it mostly suspensions and bodyworks?
Mostly suspensions, there is. As again, I'll, I'll have the operator testify to that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, we had some comments on our report, a couple of notes we wanted to have onto the plans, any objection to take care of?
None at all.
Thank you.
Uh, we believe we can satisfy any notes or other plans, uh, changes requested by either, uh, the board's engineer or the board's planner. I just covered a couple of those, uh, waivers or loose ends that may have been in the report.
We're going to proceed to the next witness.
This is going to be Mr. Phil Santi.
Firm? Did you do it?
Mr. President, could you please spell your.
Could you spell your name before we?
F I A Y.
Could you spell your name before we?
You can use that microphone there.
Hey, God, you're the representative of the business? Yes.
Uh, could you please describe the types of repair work to, and the types of trucks that you anticipate working on in this new location?
Yeah, essentially it'll be dump trucks, tractors, you know, one of the trailers. Anything suspension work in and out, replace a piece that needs to be replaced in order for the truck to get back out on the road.
What's a typical duration of, of most of your repairs?
Uh, it could be 15 minutes worth of work, it could be three hours worth of work. It can, it, it depends on, on the severity of the, of what's going on.
You don't anticipate like, uh, servicing automobiles?
No, absolutely not.
And is this similar to an operation that you have with your partners up in New York?
Yes, correct.
Could you describe for the board how many employees? You envision initially and at maximum that would be working in this location?
Yes, initially we want to start off with about five employees. Hopefully be able to grow to, up to about 10.
How many trucks do you anticipate servicing in a day to start and, and at a maximum?
I'd say anywhere from five to 12 trucks daily.
Uh, that's basically, uh, do you intend to make any modifications to the building?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, I.
It's true. I think it's a question about engines, are you?
Oh, no, no, strictly suspension. Sorry, no, no. It's just trucks, not trucks? No.
No oil changes?
No.
How many bays are you going to have?
About six to.
Six bays?
There's six vehicles inside there.
It's all, it all comes in through, there's one large door in the front of the facility next to where the office is. It's, it is a big open. And if you look at the plans that, that Gato Engineering prepared, you can see they, you can fit up to six of this size truck. Into the. What was originally a truck service area, then was a warehouse, and now it's going to be a truck service area again. It's basically the same thing. The, it's a very similar use and the owner will testify as to what this structure was built for.
So the trucks that come in, they have an appointment, correct, beforehand or not?
No, we do get walk-ins as well, you know, um, something happens on the road that same morning. They'll shoot right over to my facility and get repaired and be back out on the road.
So most of them will be walk-ins?
Yeah, not most, uh, I would say 50/50.
50/50?
There are certain things on trucks that people do know that they have to address and yes, they will make an appointment. But if something happens that morning of, you know, they're, they can just come over and get repaired.
I have a question. You just said that it was a truck service center and then it went to a warehouse and now it's going back. So the first time, did they get a variance or?
I, I don't think it was a prohibited use at the time. It's, it's been around a long time. The owner's representative will be speaking to the fact that it's been in his family for an extended period of time. They bought it as is and converted it to a materials warehouse usage. Uh, in connection with some sort of brick facing, but he'll testify to that. But originally, it was. A service area for a, a company that had a trucking fleet.
But it was allowed at that time?
Mr. Chairman, I provided a copy of the original resolution in 1981, as long as the original approval was granted. It was a planning board application, which means it was a permitted use, and the resolution called it a, uh, uh, trucking business. That was the, and there were trailers, I think, that they had stored in the back of the property.
I believe it was some industrial at the time also.
Correct.
What are the hours of operation?
Um, during the week, eight to six, uh, eight to one on Saturday.
And it's not oil changes, it's oil repair, I mean, it's repair.
Suspension repairs, yes. Suspension work, yes.
Any other questions? I proceed to the next witness.
Thank you. I'd like to call the, uh, the owner's representative, Mr. James Pollak. Mr. Pollak, could you please? Did you spell your name?
Uh, James, uh, P O, P O L A K. Yep.
Mr. Pollak, uh, this property has been in your family for some period of time, is that correct?
Yeah, probably about, I would guess, 35, 35 plus years.
Okay.
Or you can use that microphone.
Okay, 35 plus years.
So based on your personal knowledge and experience with the property, could you describe the usage over the years?
Well, we had, well, we had used it for, we were in the Stucco Construction Business. And we primarily stored some of our vehicles inside there, but it was mostly materials, cement. Um, different dyes, different tools. And we closed the business about three years ago, so the building's been vacant.
Could you describe for the board? Your arrangement with. These tenants?
Those tenants are primarily, like you said, construction supply. I believe there's a, um. Guy that has a little dumpster business there, um. There's a fencing business there, and then there's a, a guy who does like road paving work and such of that nature.
And as part of the technical compliance review for this application, was it brought to your attention that? You, your property was not operating consistent with the prior approvals?
Yes.
And since that meeting, have you addressed that situation and could you-
We're addressing and now we've already removed some of them and we're making the adjustments to be compliant with what was approved. I guess over the years, when we, when my father got, I remember there were all trailers back there. So it was kind of unclear what was going to be going on. And I was just a kid then. And he bought the trucking company out and over time, we just got rid of the trailers. And there were a couple of those tenants already back in there. So they kind of just stayed there. And over the last, I guess, five, 10 years, my father's health really went down and he was no longer coming around the yard like he used to do weekly. And it kind of expanded. So once it was brought to our attention, that day, I went down there and I started telling people they would have to leave and started making necessary adjustments to comply.
And it's your intention as part of your lease arrangement with both those tenants and the current tenants to comply with the prior approvals for those parking areas?
Yes, yes.
Do you have any questions for this witness?
There's two buildings, one that says brick coat on it. And then there's another one that I think today it's a concrete work. I missed the name.
My, the neighbor next to me, because it always says brick coat on our building on the top.
Another building on the, on the property?
No. There's a little office in the front, but that's attached to the warehouse. There's no name on there.
Chairman, I think the adjacent property is Z Brothers Concrete Contractors. That's a different lot. That's maybe, that's maybe what you're referring to, yes.
Yeah, it's hard to tell where the-
That would be to the north of this property.
That has nothing to do with us.
That property that you're looking at is the adjacent property. It's not this property.
So the way your property is shaped then is you have some frontage that goes in front of the brick coat building?
Right.
And then when you go past the big brick coat building, it actually widens out?
Yes, the yard and back.
Widens out. And then there's a little section or not so little-
Right.
In front of that back section, that's a different lot.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? For my next witness, I'd like to call a planner. Mr., I'm getting, Kevin O'Brien of Shamrock, enter front.
I do. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, could you please share with the board your credentials and licensure and experience?
Yes, good evening. I've been before this board, not since COVID, however. In addition to this board here in Middlesex County, I've had the pleasure of appearing in Carteret, Tenellan, Highland Park, Middlesex, Milltown, Monroe, New Brunswick, North Brunswick, Perth Amboy, Piscataway, Saraville, South Amboy, South, South Brunswick, South Plainfield, South River and Spotswood. Among the 275 boards I've appeared before in 14 of New Jersey's 21 counties.
Except-
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So you've worked with Gato Engineering and you've reviewed the site and the proposal. You understand the variances that we're seeking, is that correct? Specifically, the use variance?
Yes.
Could you please speak to the justification for the application?
Certainly. The applicant is here tonight seeking the D1 use variance for a use that is not allowed in the zone. So that's why we're before the zoning board and not the planning board. We require the D1 use variance, which is the most difficult variance to get, requires a super majority of the board. We're requesting a truck maintenance facility here. They're going to be doing suspension work and that's it. Suspensions are us. That's all they're going to do. The truck business existed as recently as, as far back as 1982. As you've heard testimony, your engineer put on the record the resolution of the planning board for an allowed use for a truck business back in 1982. And I believe that truck business was far more intense than what we are suggesting today, which is a truck repair business limited to suspensions. We're also requesting waivers for front yard parking and hairpin striping of parking spaces, as Mr. Farrell has listed in his testimony. The truck maintenance facility is compatible with the other existing industrial uses on Journey Mill. The property is isolated and surrounded on three sides by wetlands and open space. The former truck business dating back to 1982 performed maintenance on the site. They also stored tractor trailers. They had drivers. They were very intense use on this property. Vehicles idling, repairs to trucks and trailers, drivers reporting for duty, parking their cars for long periods of time, trailer repositioning and long hours, including weekends. We're not suggesting any of that. We're a much less intense use, as you've heard from the owner and the operator, limited to weekdays, Saturday mornings, and only suspensions. That's it. No changes to the building are proposed except for renovations. There'll be no change to the neighborhood as a result of this application. The only thing you're going to see if you drive by this place is a new sign. The application is completely conforming for bulk requirements. No bulk variances are requested. We're only here for the use variance. As a use variance, we have to meet a burden of proof. We've got to show you that there are unique circumstances surrounding this application. Got to show you that we meet the master plan. We meet the goals of the municipal land use law and that we have no negative impact upon the area or the community as a whole. So discussing the special circumstances, which we, which I've just done, in addition to that, the site is particularly suited for this use, having been a truck facility previously. So what does the master plan say about this application? It calls this area a special economic development zone. And although truck uses are not allowed here, it's an industrial and manufacturing site. They are throughout this area, whether by variance or pre-existing. There are other truck repair facilities. There are truck, other truck businesses in the area. And what the applicant is proposing is taking a vacant, isolated property in an industrial area for a compatible use with what has both existed on site and compatible to the existing uses in the area. The municipal land use law gives us guidance and the goals. And we've got to show you that we meet a number of those goals and I believe that we do. Item A, Alpha, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. Item B, secure safety from fire and other disasters. This is going to be a code compliant building. Hasn't been touched in quite some time. The fire inspector is going to have comments about this and the applicant has already said they're going to comply. Item G provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of commercial and industrial uses. Item I promoted desirable visual environment. The applicant is proposing to clean up the back of the site, letting it return to nature, as well as providing landscaping in the front, which is currently non-existent, and cleaning up the front of the site. We also meet goal M, to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activity shaping land development. I believe that this application does meet those goals. In terms of negative impact, so the applicant has got to show you that there's not going to be a negative impact on the area, upon the community. And I can't identify any negative impacts. In fact, I can only see positives from this. It's a positive for the neighborhood by meeting the character, the existing character of the neighborhood, by putting good economic activity in a vacant property, providing a ratable for the township and employment, local folks. So I see that as a positive for everybody. So I believe we've met the burden of proof for use variance. There are a number of unique aspects to this application that we've talked about. The application conforms to the master plan and will have a positive impact throughout the areas it maintains and preserves the existing neighborhood character. The application conforms to goals A, B, C, G, I and M of the municipal land use law. And the application meets the negative criteria. There are no negative impacts and the benefits of granting this application outweigh nonexistent detriments. It will be a positive in generating a ratable unemployment. I conclude that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Sir?
I think you've covered the waterfront. If there are any questions, specific question? Any questions?
I just wanted to touch on the retail space again. How big a footprint is it? And do you anticipate people coming from within Saraville, South River to go purchase?
I'm going to hand this over to the engineer to answer that question.
The footprint, and I'll probably pass it off to the operator to describe the expected clientele, but the area associated with the retail is noted on the plan as 400 square feet. And that's in that smaller front, total of about 700 square foot portion of the building. That's going to be split roughly 50/50, slightly, maybe slightly more in favor of the retail. The products being sold are-
Yeah.
It'll be essentially suspension truck parts.
So they go there to get their truck fixed and they're going to buy-
No, we have, there's other shops in the surrounding neighbors, you know, neighborhoods that can come to me and I could supply them with suspension parts in order for them to repair their old vehicles in their facilities.
Okay. And how much, how much traffic do you think, is there, I thought there's no traffic study. How much traffic is that going to cause in that area?
Parts customers, you know, maybe 10, 15 people, you know, a day to, to buy parts, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about the suspension parts.
Yes.
Say it can't be repaired. You have to get a new suspension or whatever. What happens to the old part?
The old parts, they're steel. So we will have a steel container for a steel company to come and pick up to be recycled.
Don't you like grease or oil, the suspension?
Very, very, very little oil or grease. It's huge.
So you don't have any?
Barely, barely, barely any at all.
One question. Is there a place, I might have missed it, is there a place for the dump trucks to park while they're waiting in case there's a little bit of a queue?
That's a question that I asked the chairman to-
There are. We've identified three slightly oversized parking stalls, 10 by 25 parking stalls in the front and an additional two in, in an area to the rear or to the side of the building, but more toward the rear of the site. So there's five truck parking spaces, right? That would be sized for a dump truck or a similar cab, large vehicle. And then we also have, I believe it's 19, yeah, 19, no, I'm sorry, 16 spaces for passenger vehicles, which may be employees or the retail user.
They'll be noted as this is for trucks or it's pretty obvious what's going on?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be notably larger than a, than a conventional parking stall. I don't believe that at the moment, there's a, there's a sign that, that would indicate passenger vehicles are prohibited from parking in them. But clearly that the way the site is laid out is all the, all the customer parking or all the employee parking would be along the northern property line.
One more question. On the plans, it says 27 spaces required and you're proposing 24?
Yes.
We actually spent a significant amount of time with the city's professionals talking about, was it one service bay or six service bays? If it's viewed as one service bay, we have way more parking than would be required. But leading to the, on the conservative side, we said, well, even though there's one bay entrance, if we can service six trucks at a time, we're going to do the calculation based on six. We're never going to need that much. But the rationale was come to the board and say, damaxi is going to be 27. We don't anticipate anywhere near that amount being used. We don't anticipate the trucks parking on the site in the areas that have been set aside for trucking. Literally, unless there are six trucks in the building, truck will just come in and be serviced. So we believe there's way more parking than reality, in reality, is required.
Because then the ADA space comes into play as well, right?
We are providing an ADA compliant parking stall. It is noted as stall 22. And there's also an inset on sheet four that includes creating information to demonstrate that the accessible route from this stall is nearest to the egress door associated with the office, which is the most appropriate location for that individual to enter, enter the building. So I believe-
Question more was that if you're providing the 27 spaces that were required, you don't provide two?
Yes. So between one and 25 spaces, we need one ADA parking stall. If we hit 26 or 27, we need an additional parking stall. We, it, it could be in theory located approximate to this one. We just don't, we just don't see a lot of value in adding additional striping to the site. If, if it's the board's request that we provide an additional ADA parking stall, we could probably flip this accessible aisle with the stall next to it. But based on this layout, it's not actually required.
Just as one of the members had mentioned, I think it's probably a good idea, it doesn't hurt where the truck parking is to put up one sign similar to what you put up for handicap parking stalls, truck parking area. So it's not used by-
Sure, to reduce confusion and encourage the passage of vehicles to park along northern property line. I believe that the applicant owner would be agreeable to providing truck parking signage to that effect.
Probably not to you, but is there any repair work that's done outside?
No.
Everything will be done inside?
Correct.
Okay. Is it, is it noisy? Is there a lot of banging or anything like that?
Air gun in order to remove the tire, you know, does make noise.
You're, you're far away from it.
The, the northern property is Z Brothers Concrete and southeast and west are trees, vacant, wetland.
Mr. Cornell, do you have anything to add on your checklist that you provided to-
No, Mr. Chairman, the waivers that are being requested are basically existing conditions based upon the layout of the existing parking space. And the applicant is dressing up the site. He's installing landscaping. He's providing lighting. He's going through and addressing the problems with the expansion of the rear yard lease area. So all the issues that we raised during technical review, he's taken care of.
So you're satisfied?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm also satisfied. It's only really improvements of the site and the operation. And the cephalos studies would comply with my comments in my report. So much else.
And also too, the, the owner says he's going to, the rental thing, you're going to get rid of that. And that's going to be taken care of too. You mentioned air guns. I just want to get it on the record. You're not repip placing any tires, right? You're not, you're not doing tire work. Okay. You get it on the record. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to that lease area, there are notes on the plan that indicate the limits. And that way, the zoning officer, for some reason, in the future, there are problems. He'll have a plan that refers to the specific areas that are agreed to be used just for that lease area.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in reference to this application? Hearing none.
Hearing none, I close the public portion. Do you have a summation that you want to make?
I believe that the owner, the applicant, and the professionals have addressed all of the helpful comments from the municipal professionals. They were very, very helpful to us in understanding the scope of what's being required by the board and what we need to do with the site. Based on the testimony, I believe the net criteria, not only just the parking variance, but also the use variance, bringing screw that you had into the use.
What is the pleasure of the board in reference to this application?
Take a motion to approve the application.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve and a second roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Castle Grant?
Yes.
Bella?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, your application's been approved. At our next meeting in August, we will memorialize it, and you're set to go.
Right, thanks very much. Appreciate your time.
I have, I have three resolutions here. The first one is 24 Roma Street. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the resolution that was put into the packet?
Yes.
What is the board's pleasure concerning the resolution on 24 Roma Street?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call. Yes.
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 Emma?
Yes.
Castle Grant?
Yes.
Bella?
Yes.
Yes.
The next application or the next resolution is 40 Price Street. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the resolution there?
Just to be clear, if you vote to approve the resolution, the resolution does deny the application.
If you vote yes, that's a denial, and, and that's what was voted on the last time we, we heard it. I need a motion on this one.
Chairman, I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. That is a denial application. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Escudino?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Shomburg?
Yes.
The next resolution I have is the appointment of a zoning board RLUIPA attorney. Has everyone had the opportunity to look over this resolution?
Yes, just for the board's edification, and I'll call it Arlopa Attorney Religious Land Use Institution Practice Act. Basically, this is for standing attorney for any issue, any religious land use site the board may encounter for the year.
So when, if we approve this, is he going to get hired immediately, or will he wait?
He'll be hired immediately.
Okay.
For the rest of the year.
Is he on retainer?
The council, I believe, already approved funding.
A letter was sent to the mayor and council, and I believe that they had an executive session on this Monday night and referenced this. And we do have applications that are going to be in the future, so we're trying to stay ahead of the game here. So. And so, how does it work with you, Alex? Are you still our attorney?
Yeah, yeah, so the Arlopa attorney will basically sit next to me and address any issues that arise regarding the Religious Land Use Institutional Practice Act, and I will still be the attorney for the board.
Any other questions?
Nope.
The chairman, I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Escudino?
Yes.
Emma?
Yes.
Castle Grant?
Yes.
Bella?
Yes.
Yes.
Next one, has everyone had the opportunity to look over the minutes of June 25th?
Yeah.
It's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes.
Take a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Anthony?
To approve the minutes of June 25th. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Escudino?
Yes.
Yes.
Castle Grant?
Yes.
Bella?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion for adjournment. I have a motion and a second, we're adjourned.